We're gonna start on the agenda today with a swearing in ceremony and the oath of office of our Charleston County School District Board of Trustees. So if Reverend Eric Mack, Ms. Joyce Green, Ms. Kate Darby, and Ms. Cindy Boncotes, please come forward. And if you have a representative with you to hold your Bible, that representative can come forward as well. If you will place your left hand on the Bible and your right hand in the air and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I solemnly swear
that I am duly qualified
that I am duly qualified
according to the Constitution of this state
according to the Constitution of this state
to exercise the duties of the office
to exercise the duties of the office
to which I have been elected
to which I have been elected
and that I will
and that I will
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
discharge the duties thereof
discharge the duties thereof
and preserve, protect, and defend
preserve, protect, and defend
the Constitution of this state
the Constitution of this state
and of the United States
and of the United States
so help me God.
so help me God.
Thank you. You may be seated.[85.20][85.20][applause] At this time, we're gonna do the oath of office for the constituent board members. And we're gonna do this in waves. St. James Centee District 1, Cynthia Diane Gathers, who has been reelected, Deondrea Brown, Etha Jean EJ German. Moultrie District 2, Kristen Cassie, Pamela Jawan Goldman. And James Island District 3, Katie Callaway, Susanna Sheldon, and Cynthia Smalls. We're gonna start with Cooper River District 4, Lorena Jordan, Erica Smith, and Carla Gadsden. St. John's District 9, Renee Brown Lygen, who has been reelected. Monica Smith, who's been reelected. Karen Simmons, who has been reelected. And Tammy Lockhart. And our final group, we'll start with St. Andrews District 10, Mr. Rodney Lewis, who has been reelected. Mr. David Bell, Ms. Lisa Niemeyer. The City of Charleston District 20, Ms. Barbara Graham Holmes, who has been reelected. Ms. Diane Yarborough, who has been reelected. Stefania De Alejandro and Regina Duggins. And St. Paul's District 23, Mr. Charles Glover, who has been reelected. Arthur Holmes, who has been reelected. And Francineia Nelson. Please come forward. If you have a Bible, please place your left hand on the Bible and your right hand in the air and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I solemnly swear
that I am duly qualified
that I am duly qualified
according to the Constitution of this state
according to the Constitution of this state
to exercise the duties of the office
to exercise the duties of the office
to which I have been elected
to which I have been elected
and that I will
and that I will
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
discharge the duties thereof
discharge the duties thereof
and preserve, protect, and defend
and preserve, protect, and defend
the Constitution of this state
the Constitution of this state
and the United States
and the United States
so help me God.
so help me God.
While everyone is getting reseated, we're gonna go ahead and move to the next item on the agenda, which, as you can see, it's, we will be asking the newly sworn in board members, as well as those board members that have remaining terms, the Charleston County Board members, to sign a copy of the Code of Ethics. I would like to inform all of you that the signing of this document is not required by law or by board policy. However, we felt it very important to implement this process as a commitment to, for the new board members, and a recommitment to the old board members, to CCSD's ethical principles in serving the children of this great county. The document in which you review is taken from CCSD's policy BCA. If anyone in the public wants to see a full copy of that policy, it's immediately available online on the CCSD's website.
The November 26, 2018 Board of Trustees Meeting. And just real quick, for those of you board members who may have gotten here late to the swearing in ceremony, there's a yellow folder at your place, and it's the Code of Ethics that the board members and constituent board members sign. So if you just wondered what that was, that's what that is. And we're not gonna use our board docs for voting up until after executive session, because we're having a few little technical issues. So Cindy, did you?
Yeah. I just wanted you guys to know, as sort of as a swearing in gift, and I went ahead and did it for the whole board, but each of you have a book that I bought for y'all today in darkest South Carolina. It's a biography, but what's incredibly interesting about it is, interwoven in this story are so many details of education in Charleston County from the 1900s on. It's very intriguing and very interesting how it flushes out a lot of stuff that I think we need to be aware of if we're not, or understand if we haven't before. So I just wanted you to have one of these copies.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm moved to adopt the agenda and would ask that 9A, B, and C be moved to consent agenda.
Wait a minute.
Okay.
Those are, and then item 10B to be moved after the executive session items and 6C.
Okay, so let's start.
Hold on, hold on.
Start again with the 9s.
9A, B, and C, the three audit and finance items are, one is, it was raising, there was a group of employees who were left out of the pay hikes in the spring when we approved. For whatever reason, they were, as hourly employees, they were not included. When that was brought up to our attention, we approved, approving that, the total cost is $56,000, but it will make whole all the employees who were exempt from raises last year.
How many?
It's, it was, how many?
Forty-seven.
Okay, got it. Forty-seven.
Okay, so the motion that's on the floor is to move
What are being said?
9B is to allow early head start to apply for additional funds for an extended day throughout the year.
And C?
And C is, two of the Audit and Finance Committee members agreed to extend their term. They were coming up for expiration.
So this is 9A, B, and C?
Yes.
Yes.
To move to consent is the motion?
9A is the 2018-2020 goals.
Eight, eight A, B, and C.
Eight, A, B, and C. Okay, that's where I'm confused.
Okay, excuse me.
So eight, A, B, and C, and then the other motion is to move 9B to where?
After the executive session items.
Okay. All right, so move 9B. I wonder if Jody is here yet.
I thought you said something.
9A, B, and C? You got me confused.
I'm sorry.
I was based on what we got last Thursday printed up. I don't have whatever been advised.
But you want to move 9A to consent, or you don't move it?
No, nine, oh, so we're moving, your motion is to move eight, A, B, and C to consent, and to move 9B up to immediately following the executive session action items.
He's looking at 9A, 9A, B, and C.
No, it was eight, A, B, and C.
Whatever y'all have advised.
Hold on, hold on. Wait a minute.
From the agenda that you have, it's
Data visitors, public comments.
Eight is audit and finance.
You and I are operating.
That's nine for me.
Well, it's nine, eight. So let's get Reverend Collins' up-to-date agenda, and it's eight, A, B, and C.
Perhaps it would help if we did titles?
I have a question.
Okay, the three are?
Salary for adult education.
Salary for adult education, early head start supplemental funds, and audit finance committee membership.
For me, that's nine.
The agenda's no good, Dan?
Well, no, hold on. So we have the motion on the floor. The agenda I printed today had those items as eight. So Julie can?
There are eight.
You get three new.
Yeah, there are eight on my agenda as well.
Okay, so, hold on a sec. So Julie, can somebody get us three up-to-date agendas for when we go into executive session? Yep, all right. And then the other part of the motion is moving 9B to following our action on executive session items. Do I have a second?
9B is by title what?
Is the
Primary program.
Primary program at Montessori. East School Montessori. So do I have a second?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Okay, all right, hold on. Do we have any questions about that?
Yes.
Okay, Reverend Collins?
I'm not concerned as to, we put in potential consent, as we already had a chance to discuss it, which is normal process, and there's unanimous approval for that item.
Why was that a potential consent?
Not that it's something so pertinent, so critical, it just concerns that if we start doing the, moving them publicly to potential consent, there won't be a discussion of it at all, and we won't get the details of that item being discussed, seeking approval, because from here on, it's automatic approval. And so, I mean, I don't have a problem with the head start thing, but the salary thing, I did have, we did have, wanna talk about that a little bit. And like, you wanna move East School up, I think, to Montessori, you wanna move it upward, not not consent.
Up on the agenda, right.
Right, not to consent, just up in the
I just don't want there to be a precedent, the caution that.
Okay, so do we have any other questions? All right, so the motion is?
Madam Chair.
Yes?
I'd asked to be on the list for questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cindy. Go ahead, Ms. Coates.
So I don't have a problem putting it down to potential consent, but I would like to discuss the salary additions for two reasons. One, it's using lapsed salary, which, as anybody who has been on the board for a few years, that's gonna raise some red flags, given that that was a very huge issue that we did before. So I really wanted to talk about that for a piece and find out if that's the most prudent way to find this funding. And second, to see if we have a recurring source of funds, because this will be more than, it'll be a little over $50,000 next year to do the raises appropriately on top of the raises, and to make sure that we've got a plan for that
Okay, so
before we approve this.
So would you guys, it sounds like people wanna have some discussion on that, so should we pull that one off?
Just pull A off and let B.
Okay.
Let B and C go through.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna pull, keep A on the agenda as it is, and the motion now is eight, B, and C to consent, and then 9B, which is the Montessori item, to immediately following executive session items, okay?
All right.
All right, Mr. Hollenshed?
Aye.
Ms. Coates?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion passes. Okay, so the next, thank you for all that, and Julie, help us keep up with, or Andrea, help us keep up when we get there. The next item is the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on October 22nd and the special call meeting from November 12, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Second.
Okay, and we have a second. Do we have any discussion or questions? Okay, Mr. Hollenshed?
Aye.
Ms. Coates?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
No.
No, okay. Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and the motion passes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move to elect Eric Mack as the board chair.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Garrett, and second for lots of people. We'll put Cindy down, she was loudest.
How does Cindy get to be louder than me?
Cindy's kind of asking that same question, but we'll go with it.
So it was a unanimous second. Any other nominations or any questions? Okay, Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Coates?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Sorry. Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Reverend Mack?
Yes.
Okay. All power to you.[884.54][884.54][laughter][885.54][885.54][applause] Okay, so Reverend Mack's in charge now.
Reverend Mack, I move to elect Kate Darby as the vice chair.
Is there any other nominations? Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote?
Upsteem.
Ms. Coates?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Darby?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, at this time now, you're intending motion for us to go into executive session?
The move.
All right. All right.
Okay, we will call our November 26 Board of Trustees meeting to order. At this time now, we'll have moment of silence and followed by the pledge of allegiance. of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time now, we'll have an audit report from Clifton Larson Allen presentation. That's next.
I'm thinking of first. Move it to executive session. That's not it. What did you mean, Reverend Mack?
I'm sorry.
What did you mean, East School, would you be next?
We moved it to after the executive session items.
Oh, I said items. I didn't say items.
Yeah.
He said it after executive session, when he said it. He said after executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Okay, all right, well, we can, we can do that. I'll tell you, well, let's go ahead with the presentation, we'll do it next. All right.
Yes, sorry, confused, my bad.
Hey, good evening. I'm Chris Kessler. I'm a principal with Clifton Larson Allen. This is Reed Binder. He's a manager with Clifton Larson Allen. We go by CLA. We have, we're members of the engagement team for this year's audit. We will be issuing the financial statements and completing our audit this week, so that you all are able to meet the state deadline of December 1st. Issuance will be happening by Friday. We have already presented in full, to the full audit committee, two weeks ago, the results of our audit. So what we've done today is we prepared a presentation that kinda hits the highlights of the audit, some of the information that are critical, numbers and information for you all to know as the board members. So I'm gonna go through the presentation, but we're gonna save time for questions at the end, so if there's anything that does come up, you know, please feel free to ask, interrupt, raise your hand, whatever it may need to be, or wait till the end. So the audit services we performed that we're discussing today, the financial statement audit, which is the audit that we performed in accordance with government auditing standards. We performed limited procedures on the supplementary information, the required supplementary information that are included in the financials. And then we also audit the federal compliance. And what the federal compliance is, that's your single audit. That's all the federal funding that you all get in the form of grants. We test various programs during the year to make sure that you all complied with the requirements and spending those funds in the right place. So the reports that we'll deliver, there's the independent auditor's report, which will be a clean, unmodified opinion. There's the report on internal control, which is the, that's where you would have any sort of findings over financial reporting. You have your independent auditor's report on compliance in each major federal program, which is our single audit report. And then there's the governance communication. And the governance communication is the letter that you all will receive, summarizing the results of the audit. It's essentially this presentation and the presentation that we've given to the audit committee in written format for you all to have. So the results of our audit. So the independent auditor's report, as I said, we will be issuing an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion on the financial statements. Something that you'll notice this year in the opinion that's a little different, there is an emphasis of a matter paragraph related to a new accounting standard that was implemented during the year. That didn't affect our opinion in any way, but I do wanna point that out, because that is in there, so you all are aware. The independent auditor's report and internal control, this is, as I said, where your findings will be. There was one material weakness over payroll, and two significant deficiencies, one over information technology, and the other over bus driver record checks. The payroll and information technology findings are carryforwards from last year. The findings have existed for the last few years. We'll continue to report on them until they're completely cleared. It is worth pointing out that the findings, the context has changed. The school district and management has been working on resolving those, but they do take time, and we have to just continue to report them until they're cleaned up. For the single audit report, it's gonna be an unmodified opinion on compliance, which means, again, a clean opinion, the highest level of opinion you all can receive. But there was one finding that's a significant deficiency, and it's related to the payroll issue, that we reported on the financial statement side as well, as far as approvals over time cards in the payroll system. So as far as some numbers, these are some pretty key highlights for you all as the board to be concerned with and know, and these are what we kinda decided were the important numbers that we wanna talk to you about. So from the general fund financial statements, your total fund balance for the year was $70.1 million. And what that's made up of is $4.1 million of non-spendable fund balance, which, that means it's not liquid. It's sitting in inventory, it's sitting in prepaid expenses. Then you have your committed fund balance of $36.9 million. That is the fund balance that you all have set aside to meet the state budgetary requirements for the fund balance you're required to keep as a portion of your operating budget, year to year. You have a total assigned fund balance of 9.4. What assigned means is that you all have said, we're gonna cut out this portion of our total fund balance and assign it to instructional programs for that purpose going forward. And then the remainder is 19.7 in unassigned. That is just your fund balance that is available for any sort of future expenditures that you all may choose, that is residual within your fund balance. So what this all comes from, it's a change in fund balance of $28.1 million. So that was an increase over last year in your general fund. So as that compared to budget, your revenues were $2.9 million above budget, and your expenses were $17.3 million less. So those two components accounted for the 28.1 increase compared to budget from what you all were looking at. So very positive results in your general fund this year. Really nothing from you all to be concerned about at that point with the health of the general fund with the results that you had. So that was kinda it, what I wanted to talk about, so I'll pause for questions, comments, or anything else at this point.
Okay, is there any questions from any of the board members?
I have one. So to be clear, you said there was an increase in fund balance from last year, but because these things are not being done off of what normal years look like, are you saying this is an increase from June of 2017 to June of 2018?
Correct. Yeah, fiscal year 2018.
I would appreciate, for the public's sake, if you could just say, just explain what the payroll issues are.
Absolutely. So the payroll finding that has been going on for the last couple of years, within the payroll system, employees report their time, and time cards are submitted so that employees can be paid. Within that system, there are electronic sign-off requirements on those time cards. There is a requirement within the school districts' operating policies and procedures to approve those time cards. Both the employees have to sign off, and their supervisors are supposed to sign off as reviewed and approved. What is happening is, is that some employees of the school district are not following that policy and procedure, and not documenting their review and approval within the system. So the school district has been working on implementing policies and procedures to hold people accountable, and to track and monitor who these individuals are that are continually violating the policies and procedures, but that's ultimately where it comes from. It wasn't that any payroll was misreported, or that we found any dollars misspent, it was truly an internal control standpoint, that policies and procedures were not being followed.
And when, when the irregularities occur, they occur in the electronic system. So what's having to happen is the sign-offs do occur, but people go back and do them by hand after the deadline in the electronic system. So we are trying to get everyone in compliance with the electronic system. Would you please share with the board one of the suggestions that you offered to the Audit and Finance Committee about how you've seen districts finally come to terms with, how you've seen entities, not just school district, come to terms with this problem?
Yeah, it's something we've seen with other payroll systems, and then the system you use of Cronos, where this problem has occurred. You know, it would be various departments, or particular supervisors, that were the continual, I'd say, issue with following these policies and procedures. And what ultimately stopped this from happening was, was that payroll was not run until all of those time cards and department payroll, or whatever it may be, was approved by the right personnel. And it was an unfortunate turn of events that it had to come to that, and it caused some strife within the entities, but that's what ultimately changed the culture, to be able to, you know, get rid of that finding and have everybody following those policies and procedures.
Thank you.
And just on that note, it would take the will of this board to say you're not going to pay if people don't do their job and report when they're there, not there, and the supervisors approve it, which during the summer, we still had double digits of supervisors who did not actively approve payrolls weekly, so.
So it's in the supervisory
Just one second, Joyce.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Coates had a question?
So, but I think you and I are headed in the same place. Yes, absolutely not running payroll until it's been signed appropriately. By the way, it's legal. I mean, it's a requirement, but it would be more against procedures to run a payroll that has not been approved. But second to that, this is also, while we may not want to go there, certainly this should reflect on performance reviews, future promotions, ability to retain your job at that supervisory role. Are we holding, do we do evaluations? Do we hold people accountable for this as part of their job description?
So since the board's directive last year to redouble our efforts, the chief financial officer has worked closely with those who supervise the individuals who may not be signing off, and that's exactly what I understand to be happening, that the conferences with individuals are happening now, and that that will reflect in their evaluation. So those who are involved need to nod, or
And they are documented conversations? Okay.
Joyce?
And so I guess the question that I have is, is it repetitive with the same individuals?
Mr. Kennedy, if you wanna respond?
So it is a long-running problem that started with the implementation of the electronic system, Cronos. And so prior to Cronos, it was a manual timekeeping system. And so we didn't have, we may have had the same issues, but we didn't have a means to actually track them. So this came to my attention back in, back in the spring, I think it was April. And so we did, we put in some measures to address the problem, both in terms of the deficiencies in implementation of the system. And so that implementation deficiency was lack of training, and so we put together a strong training program. We deployed staff out to all locations, all locations, to train supervisors on how to process these time cards. And so then at the same time, we developed a progressive discipline procedure that we were about ready to roll out, that includes some of the things that the board talked about tonight, but some other things also. And so from April until now, we have made significant improvements in decreasing the lack of compliance, but we have a level of non-compliance that has not, we have not been able to get across that hurdle. And so it's a small group, smaller group of people, and so we're ready to take more aggressive procedures to address those, those non-compliance.
My question still is, is it the same group of people?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I didn't hear that clearly from what you were saying.
Well, it changed, it changes from, from week to week, but there's, there's some people that are consistent, consistently on the, on the list. Yes, ma'am?
Obital offenders.
So...
Sure.
Okay.
And so, and so in all seriousness, we are, we are prepared, we are prepared with school board support to take the appropriate measures to finalize the correction.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there any further questions?
Mr. Chair, I have one more question, and this might not be, it's either for the superintendent or Mr. Kennedy. It's clearly nothing to do with the audit, and this might not be the, the time and venue to discuss it. While we all know Cindy likes to save money, we have an issue where we are struggling to appropriately fund education, and I'm, I'm very happy with the fund balance, but can we get something that gives us a perspective? It's very difficult to say, yippee, we didn't spend $17 million, which is actually $19 million because you got, you got more revenues than anticipated, while we're still kind of struggling to fund certain programs, et cetera. So I mean, can we at some point have a way to correlate those two facts?
Lap salary? I mean, it's $15 million of that.
Fifteen, fifteen million of that, and that would be a concern. $15 million of staff we could have hired but couldn't find the person to employ?
So, so that's true. And I, I don't know yet, we're just beginning to do the projections for fiscal, in this fiscal year, but as you're aware, the board approved salary increases for teachers significantly. And so when we opened school this year, we essentially opened without any teacher vacancies, which is something that is, historically, we haven't done, at least for a number of years.
I apologize. I, it's hard to remember in December that we're talking about a school year that ended last year. It's so, yeah, okay. I, I understand.
Okay. Is there any further questions for CLA?
One quick thing?
Okay.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, that was the strategy that we intentionally employed because, as you pointed out earlier, we were, we, the board was budgeting to use lap salaries. So we stopped that until we could restore the fund balance. And as we work to improve our fill rate, that strategy will...
That's what I'm looking for, to see that strategy phase out because we've accomplished the goal.
Bill. And so that's, you know, within the next couple of years, we'll need to change that strategy, which is why it's so critical to get some relief from Act 388.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so kindly.
Thank you all very much. Thanks to the staff.
So early on in our agenda approval, we move item eight...
Nine B.
I'm sorry, nine B after executive session. So at this time now, nine B, primary program for East Cooper Montessori charter.
Could I move to direct the administration to execute a new addendum to the East Cooper Montessori charter contract to specify that the district will fund seats for the three to four-year-olds in the primary program for the remainder of the contract term, provided that at least, providing that at least 40% of those seats are allocated to students participating in the SNAP program, the Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, and barring any unforeseen budget challenges.
Second.
Hold one second.
This would be for next year.
Yep.
I would like some clarification on the motion to, you said, you said to the remainder of the contract term, what is that date?
You know...
When's your, when's your current?
We're on a one-year contract at this point.
All right. So hang on one second. There's been a motion that was made and a second. So now we will entertain questions about the motion that has been made. Mr. Garrett?
Does this need to be, does this need to be extended beyond one year then?
I think maybe the question is, when are, when are you up for renewal?
So the Charter School renewed its charter in 2015, so we're due for a re-charter in 2025. And we did that because we were moving into the old Whitesides building and we wanted the building contract and the charter to be lined up. It does make sense that this...
To make it concurrent with the...
...just becomes part of that contract.
Can I amend the last, barring any unforeseen budget challenges, continuing through the balance of their charter?
Through the balance of the charter?
Yes, of 2025.
2025.
We'll probably need to see that in writing to make sure the wording is correct, but I...
Okay. Kate, do you accept the friendly amendment to the motion?
I do.
Okay. Is there any questions? Reverend Collins?
Yeah, I thought Miss Swanigan earlier was doing about the, about the funding, and the motion doesn't mention anything about the amount of dollars we're talking about. And that needs to be brought out, the amount of money for the 32 students. And I want to make sure I understand, you just said of those 32 students?
So I came prepared tonight to speak on the primary...
Just one minute.
Okay.
You said of those 32 students, 40% of those students are minority students? Am I saying that right?
That's incorrect. There's 40% of them qualify for SNAP, which is a governmental assistance program.
Of the 30, of the 32 students, then, how many, what percentage of those are minority students of the 32 in this program?
That is on the page that is titled "Non-Caucasian." There's a non-Caucasian slide as well as the next slide is the African-American percentages in the primary and the whole school.
So what are the numbers, please?
So in 2015, when we moved into the building, that was the first year, the, the whole school had 1% African-American population. The school is up to 5% now, and our primary class is up to 26%. So it went from 14 to 15 to 21 to 26.
So also out of 400 students?
Reverend Collins, if, since you have a lot of questions and Ms. Swanigan does have a presentation, how about we allow her to do the presentation and then maybe some of those questions may be answered?
All right. But let me give you the first priority, just then, please.
Okay. All right, we'll do.
Thank you. So good evening. I'm Jody Swanigan. For those of you that have not met, I'm the principal and founder of East Cooper Montessori Charter School. Thank you, Dr. Postaway, and Chairman Reverend Dr. Mack, and the members of the Charleston County School Board of Directors. I appreciate your time and your energy and especially your support over the past 16 years of our relationship. I'm here tonight to request the continued funding for the primary program now in its fourth year of existence. ECMCS is an excellent-rated school, and I feel very proud that together we have created a unique opportunity to support families that truly need our support. The students in our primary program receive access to an excellent early education program and are able to stay in our school until they age out. The powerful beginning that you grant these students can only lead to great achievement in their future. I'll now share with you the intent and outcomes of our program. So when we designed this program, it was to offer a full complement of Montessori, which is offered in all the Charleston County School District Montessori programs. There are now six total public Montessories. When we began 16 years ago, there were at that time only two. So since that time, there became an initiative to put a Montessori option in all areas of the district. Once we moved into the building that we are in now, it gave us the opportunity to add a primary program because there were two code-ready classrooms, and we would have to, have had to have spent, we, meaning you and I, would have had to have spent more money to upset those classrooms to elementary rather than leave them at the primary level. 40% of those slots for those three and four-year-olds are allocated to families that receive SNAP. That is a, that is a higher rating of need than, than a free and reduced lunch application, just so that you understand that part. And one of the intents was to increase the diversity of our school program while offering this, this early education to families in need. Some background on, we started the program in 2015. There are two total classrooms of 24 students each. That is three, four, and five-year-olds that are in the same classroom. There are 32 students which we ask for funding from, from the school district. Sorry, I forgot that was in control, this part. There are 32 total students and there are two total teachers, two teacher assistants, and our expenditures per year are $8,967. We have only asked, our original contract was for $6,750 and that we would cover the rest. And the reason for that number was that was, at that time, the base student cost, and we would cover teacher training materials, any special education services, or anything that would come outside of that $6,700, which we have done. Since this program and since moving into our current location, in the last two years, our lottery applications went from 436 applications to 793 and valid and eligible at the time of the lottery, which means that they were validly able to apply for the lottery. The increase I attribute in 2018 was that we joined the choice application process with the district so that you could ask, you could check off that you wanted applications in multiple schools, and you could also weight your, your wishes. You could say, "I really want this school," or you could put that school last on your list. Last year, there were nine total SNAP valid and eligible. This year, there were 87. That was, again, at the time of the lottery. So as, as the time has gone on, so has the increase in our applications. I also want to clarify that of those 87, that was at the time of the lottery, which I believe was in February this year, since then, we have, we have, we have had trouble getting enough SNAP-rated applicants, and we, at this time, do not have anyone on the waiting list. So if you know anyone, you can apply right now and get a spot. The next slide shows our free and reduced primary lunch status. That is a comparison over the years since moving into that building and between the move-in and now. So as you can see, the, the numbers have gone up, and, and those of you that were on the board at that time, remember that one of the reasons we wanted to move into the Whitesides building was that we wanted to move out of the neighborhood of Ion because we wanted to, to draw a more diverse population to our school. At this time, there would be 13 spaces that were, that are, if we were to be at the 40%, we're at 35 as of this minute, we are holding two spaces open. Right now, we have not filled them because we do not have an application to fill them. There, the next slide shows the African-American population in comparison with the whole school. 1415, again, was pre-Whitesides. So we moved into that school with a 1% African-American population, and it has now increased So some of you may be asking, well, why is CCSD having to fund the, the program? And that's where this gets just a little bit on the complicated side. So CCS, Charter School law does not allow us to, to, Charter School law does not allow us to give preferences to anyone except for the sibling of a currently enrolled person or a staff member. CCSD is essentially paying for these three and four-year-olds, which puts them under CCSD's rules, and we can then allocate 40% to be for families that qualify for the SNAP. If we, if CCSD does not fund those kids, then it becomes a tuition-based program, and any chance for continued diversity in the school will, will not be achieved. So that is why I'm asking for you all to fund that program. So the next three slides shows the pros and cons of each, and then if tuition-based program is, doesn't, doesn't really help the initiatives that we have in place. And so that is my presentation, and these are the amazing children that we have in our school. And I will tell you that what I have learned through this program is that the early identification of students with, with special needs is critical, and, and we have, we have really changed some lives.
Okay. Reverend Collins, are there any questions to answer?
No.
Okay.
I want to make sure I understand the request. I know Todd made the motion, just sent the request for about seven years, but it still doesn't show the, the amount of money being requested, which multiplies to quite substantially. If my math is right, probably about a million and a half dollars.
So, right here, the, we started the program at $6,750, and we are now changing that to the base student cost, which at this minute, I think is like 72, 8,200?
I'll see, the $216,000 per year, so you figure that times seven is about a million and a half dollars.
No.
Yes.
Well, it is, except they're not doing $216,000 times 32.
Times seven, times seven.
No, they're doing...
Seven years in charge.
Seven years, yes, about a million and a half dollars.
Oh, okay. Over the life of the agreement.
Reverend Collins, your question?
So you made, you made this statement that this money from CCSD, this $216,000, really helps your, your diversity. But you say it's at 5% out of 400 students. That's about, I guess around 20 students or so. I guess I'm having a little, I don't, my problem's not so much the money. I guess just to get down to earth with you is that, why does CCSD need to pay for the three and four-year program out of our budget to increase diversity when you guys are in control of your admissions process and can recruit minority children and different background children? Why do we have to, why should we fund that for such small percentages of diversity in your school? Help me understand that portion of it. Why can't you do it on your own?
So there are only two code-ready rooms, so that's the, that's where the number of classrooms is derived. And if the Charter School cannot give preference to children with, it's in the law, there's two exceptions. One is for siblings of currently enrolled students, and one is for staff. We can't give that preference for 40%.
Oh, that I understand. But what I'm asking is that, of your own initiative, why can't you have a reverse recruiting team that recruits a diverse background without us spending $216,000 per year? Why can't the school accomplish that on its own is what I'm asking, not what the law says? Why aren't you attracting a more diverse population on your own is what I'm asking?
Well, we are doing a lot in recruitment. In fact, putting it on Facebook, we go to all, all kinds of churches, neighborhood establishments. We're having trouble getting the 40%.
Of the 32 kids?
We have two spaces right now, and that is with our recruiting efforts that have been done.
I think what you're asking, Reverend Collins, is why couldn't they pay for it themselves, right?
Not, not quite. No, the diversity piece is important to me.
Yeah.
And I don't mind having it for a year. I don't like the motion that Todd made to tie up eight years of a $216,000 per year, seven years, I mean. But to me, a school should be able to attract kids of our backgrounds by its own merits, by its own program. And you said this was a major factor for you to get from, help you get from 1% diversity to 5% diversity, and that, and that 5% diversity is still only about 13 children or so, or maybe it's 20 at the whole school out of 400 kids. So I just don't see the impact of the money that's creating the diversity. Now, if you tell me you need this money for a reading program, for a writing program, that's something different. And I'm not against, I'm not against you getting money for this school. I just don't see the diversity being affected by the money, is what I'm trying to say.
There is not any other program that I'm aware of that has created a space in an excellently rated school for children who don't have an, don't normally have access to early education. And for that, I'd say 1, 32, 42, 22. I, I just think it's, it's, it's doing its job, and, and it's creating the impact that we have the opportunity to create. We don't have more spaces.
Last question then, so...
Okay, Reverend Collins.
This is my last question.
All right, there are others that have questions.
So what then, what then attracts Caucasian students to your school that they get in so easily? What's, what's the difference?
I can, I, I don't know that, other than I know that I hear on a regular basis that our school has an excellent reputation in, in our community, and the people who apply are people who are looking for a Montessori education. I, I think that we could all do a better job of, of educating our entire community about the, the impacts of Montessori education as a whole.
Thank you.
Okay, Cindy?
So just because it does bear that we'll probably need to know this, who determines the base student cost? You're requesting...
Date.
So this is the state-based student cost, and is it a weighted student cost?
You mean weighted based on special revenues?
Right. Base student cost is weighted based on special needs, based on gifted and talented. Are you asking for the weighted?
To my knowledge, that wouldn't be available anyway. We, we pay for all of the special education services and such, and I think the same is true of the school district. I don't think those funds are available to either of us, really, from the state. I could be wrong about that part.
So then I think all we need is, just so we can stay on top of this, is as we do our annual budgeting, we'd need to know what that is as a reminder for this.
Okay. Kate?
I just would appreciate your time today and point out that we, you know, we've got, as you said, six Montessori programs throughout the district, and if we didn't have East Cooper Montessori there, in the East Cooper area, the district would be providing that program, and we would be paying for the primary grades of K3 and 4. So I...
With all of, with everything else.
With everything else. Exactly. With everything else. With all the other grades up to eighth grade. So I, I support continuing, and I think the more you all do it, the longer you do it, and that we'll see, you know, we'll continue to see more diversity, but we've got to go out there and sell it too.
Okay. Todd?
Just a quick note with, I hope over the next eight years, this, seeing the primary program at 20% free and reduced is at least testament, 26% of the primary program, testament to the success of the effort. Compared with Wando High School that has 11% African-American and 17% minority total. So I mean, the demographics within Mount Pleasant are not conducive to having, you know, 50/50.
We understand that, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. We have a motion on the floor and a second.
Eric.
Okay.
Good to see you again, Judy.
You too.
The last time you were here before us, you told me that once you got a new building, you would grow your African-American population. You said it wouldn't be a problem. You, you're... you would grow your African-American population. You said it wouldn't be a problem. Your, your, your reason behind that was because you were limited in space at ION. And because of the location of the school being in that highly affluent neighborhood, it really hurt your chances of increasing your students of diversity. And now, you're here because you would like to request additional resources to help attract more students of diverse backgrounds. So I have a couple of questions for you. The first question is, what is your current enrollment?
We are at 400 students. We have almost doubled our population since moving into the building only three years ago.
Okay.
This is our fourth.
And your percentage of African-American students is at what now?
I think it was at 5%.
It's 5 now.
So what's that, 20 kids?
Yeah.
20 kids, right?
Mm-hmm.
And when you left.
This, well, this, this population, these primary students, they are now in first grade. This is the first wave of kids to come through.
Right, but I'm talking about.
Sure.
The school as a whole, not just this, but not just the, the primary grade numbers for a second. So, so you have 5% at 400 students. And when you first moved, you had 200 students, right?
2250, mm-hmm.
Okay, 2250. And what was your diversity numbers then, when you first moved to Whitesides?
That was less than a percent. And again, I don't, I don't, I don't mean to harp on this, but this is the first group. So we don't take any students past, on occasion, we'll get a second or a third grade space, but that's it.
Right, right, right. But, but students can apply to Montessori at three, four, or five years old, and you accept those students, correct?
Not five. Well, five, they're already in, they, they apply at three, and if they stay at four, they're still there. And at five, now we're receiving public funding.
Right.
And they're, but yes.
Okay. And so, of the students that you have currently, the African-American students, how are they performing academically?
I.
I mean, you only got 20. I knew you should.
To be honest, they, they do great. I mean, the school is an excellent rated school.
But you and I both know, the sum carries the remainder. So my question again is, how are your students of diverse backgrounds performing individually, not collectively as a school? But how are they performing as students under your leadership?
I will tell you that a study was just completed on that very topic, and, and it showed, and it's in your packet as well. And I would direct you to the very last line, the very last paragraph of that, of that article, which says that high-quality early learning programs can be brought to scale in very diverse public settings to produce outcomes that we want to see in all children. We can be more successful by focusing on the developing of the whole child and not just their academic skills. And what is ideal for low, low-income children is what is ideal for all children. Understanding them as people and giving them self-agency, the freedom to learn, and their own pace, and the guidance to become lifelong learners. And that, that is the mission of the school. And it, and to me, there, it is not different for one child to another child. We're giving that to all of our children.
I, I don't, again, Jody, I don't disagree with the mission of what was just read. But my question really is, how are those 20 students performing at your school? The reason why I ask is because those, those of us who studied the data in our district, our Montessori schools across the board, the six that you've mentioned, two, which were only here when you got started initially, have systematically been underperforming when it comes to students of color. So that's why I want to know exactly how those students in your school are performing. Because you are asking this board to grant you $200,000 more to start early education with children who under normal circumstances may never attend your school. They may not even think about it. Their parents may not even consider it. But if they are not performing well when they're with you, why would we grant you additional resources to do something that cannot be measured? That's why I want to know how they're doing. You only have 20. I didn't ask you to give me the results of 150 students. I'm only giving you, I'm only asking you to give me the results of those 20. And so it makes it difficult, because you're here today asking to diversify your student population. I don't think that's a bad thing. You said you could do it no matter what, but you're here today. Who's going to stop Orange Grove from coming next week and telling us they want to increase their minority population, and they need additional funding to start a program? Again, I think your efforts are well-intended. But if our goal as a board is to make sure and to ensure that students who start school as early as they will at your school at three years old, that they are able not just to teach to the whole child, right, but to show quantifiably how they're growing. I know there's a new system that we just came up with, not us, but the state, that talked about growth and proficiency, right? As a, as a board, we need to see our children perform on gray level, but we also need to see them grow each year they're in our buildings. And so I will take the fact that you won't answer my question as the fact that maybe they're not doing as well as you would like them to do. And if that's the case, I can respect your honesty. I could. Mr. Miller, we're doing our best, but we're just not making the mark. But we need more resources to do that. But you haven't said that, so I'll move on. So my next question is.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
That would be an incorrect assumption. You don't have an answer, because I wasn't asked to break those, those students out. So I will absolutely send you that data. I, this, the school has, we watch the data of all of our students and their growth, and we're an excellently ra-rated school. I did not break out those, that's not how we look at data. So I, I will break it out for you, though.
But you do look at data in subgroups. I mean, you do realize we look at data in subgroups as well, though.
Absolutely. But you have to have a big enough group to look at a subgroup. And that's where we struggle.
I don't disagree with that. But Judy, you only have 20. Let me move on.
Mr. Miller, you have another question?
I do, I do.
Okay.
Why, why use the SNAP criteria versus students who would apply and, and not students who apply, students who would qualify for free and reduced lunch, when the SNAP criteria is slightly harder to meet?
Because the first year that we did it, we found ourselves, because we're a charter school, we don't have a, another entity to help us with that process. We were asking families to bring us their financial records, and it, it did not feel good. And so we wanted a, a criteria that was going to be an outside agency that would look at that. And we wanted to make sure that the people who got those spaces were the ones who really needed it. And that was really important to us.
One more question, and I'll let you go. How many members on your staff, certified teachers in your?
There's 52 staff members. There are 20 or so teachers.
How many of them African-American?
One, I think. Maybe two.
That might be one of the problems. As a parent, honestly, when parents go into schools, they want to see themselves represented in those buildings. It makes it extremely difficult to ask a parent to place their child in a school when the people who work in that school don't represent them or look like them. So if the people who, if the adults in the building who look like the parents and children you're trying to attract only work in the kitchen and as janitors, it makes it very difficult for a parent to feel comfortable to send their child to a school when they don't see themselves reflected in the staff. And so as a principal, you have the opportunities to hire staff as you see them come in, as you think they're fit for your, for your building. So as you're looking to diversify your student population, I ask that you also look to diversify your teaching staff as well, in any way that you can, because it really would, may assist you in your ability or your willingness to diversify your student population.
I couldn't agree more.
Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation.
And I also have asked.
Call the question. I call the question. Okay, well done.
I hope that you also hear later from, from one of those parents who has a child in, in our school. And I think she'll speak to that very, that very topic.
Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation. Board members, I just want to remind you that we are voting electronically. Also, keep in mind that starting tonight, we will have 15 seconds. We're going to do the 15-second timeframe and voting so that we can be prompting our voting and not being delayed. So, well, there's a time, there's a time keeper over there. Your vote has, your motion has been placed in front of you. We ask that you please cast your vote.
It was time to read that. So I think we need to, the, the language is, is a little off, because it says for the remainder of the contract term, and then it says through the balance of the charter in 2025. I would say that the remainder of the contract term is no longer necessary language. It should very clearly say that we're moving to direct the administration to execute a new addendum to the East Cooper Montessori Charter School Contract to specify that the district will fund seats for three and four-year-old students in the primary program for the balance of their current charter, which is 2025.
So.
And then remove, because those two things don't necessarily match.
Okay, I understand that. But it's been second, a motion's been made by Mr. Garrett and second by Ms. Darby. So if we're asking for a change in that motion, then we need a friendly amendment.
Right, and I am, I am asking. But do you see where it says two different timeframes, the remainder of the contract term, which she said is one year, and it says through the balance of 2025? You have two different timeframes in the same motion. So y'all can figure out how to clean that up, but it, it needs not to be contradictory.
So when we do it, just taking out the, strike the remainder of the contract?
Somehow get that, right.
I agree to strike, primary program, comma, providing at least 40%, and then the charter language at the end.
Okay, all right.
Okay, we're all going to agree.
Get that redone, and then we'll vote. Thank you.
Okay, while that's happening.
It didn't change.
It takes it a second.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, is it coming back up?
Oh, it might. Can we just agree that, you know, we'll make sure that that's what's in the minutes? Because we've, I mean, a lot of us have already voted on that wording.
Julie, do you have it?
I do.
Okay.
And I think it would be better if we start using the system the way it's meant to be used, which means that the public sees the motion we're voting on.
All right, you want to just add a motion then?
No, we just, we changed, we, did you hear what?
I changed it. It's not reflecting in what you're looking at.
Got it.
Okay, so just to be clear, if anybody's got any other question.
Yep.
Primary program, comma, delete.
Right.
Right there.
Correct. Got it. Thank you.
Got it.
Okay.
We're all clear?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Could you read out the votes?
Did it record the vote?
Did everybody vote?
I did, but it was off, it's off my screen, so I wasn't sure.
Okay. Julie, you have the, the votes?
Yeah.
Can you let us know?
There you go.
All right, four yes, two no, two abstention, and one not present.
Motion passes.
So that motion passes. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck to you, Ms. Wannigan.
So we'll move to the executive session items. 6A.
All right, I have a motion. I'd like to move to allow the students, the two students, to remain, to remain for the remainder of the 2018-19 school year only, with tuition waived for this school year only.
Second.
Okay, it's been probably moving second.
So I add in an only Julie, got it?
And we ask everyone to please cast their vote. Okay. Okay, the motion passes eight to one. Okay, item 6B.
I have a motion to approve the student and clergy candidates.
6B?
Yes, health advisory committee vacancies.
6B.
6B.
Health advisory committee vacancies.
Motion to approve the student and clergy candidates to be appointed to the CCSD Health Advisory Committee.
Second.
Probably moving second.
Yeah, the screen's just repeat.
All right, 6B.
The screen's just repeat.
Well, that's because that's from executive session. You can scroll down to.
Oh, okay. I got the key. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Do we, do we need to change that policy?
We should work on that.
Okay, has everyone cast their vote?
Requirement policy?
Probably.
Yes, if we can at least be compliant.
All right.
Okay, that motion passed, eight to one. Okay, and item 6C was just a discussion of the charter school contract, so no action on that item. And now we'll have.
Wait a minute. They said there's, there's no action on six.
No, sir. No, sir.
6C, no.
No action item.
This presented as an information item?
Correct.
It had three, three possible motions issued by.
It also had information as an option, so if someone wants to make a motion, they can.
So we'll now entertain item 7A, public comments. Ms. Darby.
I think we, if you don't mind, sir, I'll probably reveal when we clear the matter up, 6C.
It says action or information. I mean, if somebody wants to make a motion.
It's for information. Yes, sir.
They can, but.
It's information.
Well, as I said, the doctors told us they needed direction, I'm sorry, direction for, for the charter school, so the school can be proud of what's to come or what's not to come. So if we're not taking any action.
I think we were, they, they received, she received direction from us.
Right. In our discussion.
There's no action in the background. I mean, we have to do action out here on the floor.
Okay, just calm down. In our discussion, we, the board have already taken action as far as that charter school is concerned. And in our discussion, I believe we have given clear direction. I believe the superintendent received information as to how we need to receive as far as we look toward the closure or proceeding toward the action that the board have already taken.
Allow me to say this, if you would, sir. You know, I just want to be quite clear in dealing with our charter schools, and not only charter schools, but schools that are predominantly African-American in population. You know, we, we closed or attempted to close certain schools. For example, I use Willmont Frazier. We closed Lincoln Middle High School. All these are minority schools. Burns being closed out and going to Meeting Street. We attempted to close Greg Malice, another school that's predominantly African-American. And now we're looking at trying to close Prestige Charter School, which is another school that's predominantly African-American. But, but yeah, we supported schools like Pace with money. And we gave another charter school over $300,000, enough to pay back. These are, these are not schools that were minority schools. We helped, we assisted, we're helping East Cooper Montessori, East Cooper Montessori program now. We're helping them, and what we should help our schools. And there are other schools we've helped assist with money. But, but to me, it seems like when it comes to the African-American charter schools and African-American public schools, that we're being harsh on these schools to not give them a fair chance to operate. How can we expect a school to be successful in 18 months, in that 18-month timeframe? We were tempted to close the school. We wouldn't support the school. Someone's having to visit the school. And we send letters threatening closure. And we, we send red flags. And so what we're doing now, quietly, is allowing the schools to run but close out at the end of the school year, which is not fair to children who aren't being served where they were.
Reverend Collins, do you have a question?
Yes.
Because the board has already taken action back in March in reference to this.
But tonight is.
About hour here.
Yeah. So what's your question? What's your question? What's your question?
Well, you need to state that in a minute, that that's the action the board's going to take.
No, no, the board has already taken that action. Yeah.
So my, my point is this. If we're helping schools and children, really helping children, we need to have all children equally and fairly, whether the population is Caucasian or Hispanic or African-American. Prestige needs our support. They need our help. And tonight, I don't see where we're doing anything to help Prestige Charter School, but to further deteriorate this population and its enrollment. I want, I want, I want us.
What's your question, Reverend Collins?
There's, there's no motion on the table.
Well, there are, there are, there are motions, there are motions right here, sir.
Right. It's just information. But Reverend Collins, Reverend Collins, do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what's your, state your question.
Can we allow Prestige Charter School to operate for at least three years, and then evaluate after the three years? Can we support the school for three years, at the end of three years, if there haven't been any gains, then the board take action, whether it be positive or negative. But to do that at 18 months is not a fair chance to school that's trying to help children who otherwise were not learning, were far behind.
Is that your question or your motion? Or you're making a motion? What are you trying to do?
Can we, my motion is to support Prestige Charter School for a minimum of three years from the date of inception now, from the first year, right now. from the date of inception now, from the first year, right now and halfway through, that they need 36 months to, to lay a foundation to get started. That we support the school for three years, simply, simple terms. That's what I'm asking the board to do, support Prestige for three years.
That's the motion?
Yes.
You, you put a dollar amount on that?
You can, I mean, I don't have a lot of it.
Is that when it come before, is put that?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, maybe a hundred thousand dollars per year. Well, $100,000 per year.
So if I can just remind the board that, that we have discussed this issue as far as Prestige is concerned for a number of hours and a number of meetings. And Reverend Collins, I, you know, I, I see it differently. I, I see that we, we support all students in the district without looking at, at color. So I, I see it differently, and some may differ, and that's fine. But this board has already taken action back in March.
I understand, sir.
And we have discussed moving forward how we could better serve these students so that they can get the adequate resources that's needed moving forward. Unless there's further action that this board desires to take, I, I think we are to move on to our next item of discussion.
If Reverend Collins made a motion, I'll second the motion.
Call the question.
Reverend Mike, I'm simply asking you, Reverend Mike.
No, no, you're asking the board.
I called a question.
Okay, okay.
The motion's been called.
Call the question.
Alright. Alright, Reverend Collins, restate your, your motion for clarity.
We will support Prestige Charter School for three years, and assist them with $100,000 per year.
Okay, the motion has been-
Operate.
Presented by Reverend Collins, seconded by Mr. Miller.
So for clarification on the motion, Reverend Collins made a motion to support Prestige with $100,000-
He said it in English as well.
-per year from its inception. Are you inferring in this motion that it's retroactive?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I asked him for retroactive.
So then it's $100,000 per year from now till the end of-
Yes.
The, end of next year.
Okay, the motion has been to allow Prestige Academy to remain open for three years. Motion by Collins, seconded by Miller. Can we allow, for the opportunity?
Mr. Chair, to be clear, the board can't take action on a most, motion to allow Prestige Academy to remain open for three years, because the board cannot take an action that contradicts standing board directives. The action would have to be to reverse the decision made in March, and then decide what you want to do. But this motion can't be made because it contradicts board directive.
Okay, that's why we're discussing.
Right, but it, it can't be voted on.
How about you amend the motion to simply say that the school district will allocate $100,000 this year, this year, for Prestige Charter School?
Second.
Okay, so you were drawing your earlier motion, right? And then, and the new motion is to allocate $100,000 this year?
To Prestige.
Alright, okay, Julie.
As for instruction.
Julie, have you captured that?
Whoa, 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 he's changing the motion again.
Hold, hold, hold one second, guys. Hang on, hang on, hang on one second, you know, we're-
Just coming up with policy on the fly, hours and hours of discussing this over the last-
Okay, we will not move any further until everyone ceases. Originally, we had one motion on the floor, which was to allow Prestige Academy to remain open for three years with $100,000 per year from now until the end of three years. Now, it's my understanding that that is no longer the motion, correct?
So we need to, we have to override, not override, but-
I'm asking a question, that is no longer the motion, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Miller, did you make a new motion?
I did.
And what is your new motion?
Uh, what did I say?
You give $100,000 this year.
$100,000 this year, to go to board Prestige Charter School.
Okay, and Reverend Collins, you second that motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, is there any questions about that motion? Harry, now do we ask that you cast your vote? Has everyone cast their vote?
No. Well, I mean, I voted on that other one.
Go off, just click on change vote in the right, top right, and it will pop up for you.
Julie, do you have my vote?
Yeah, she does, or shade your motion.
No, I don't have my vote.
Click on that.
Okay.
Click, you can vote on that, but you just can't.
Oh, you vote yes. They don't change the vote over there.
You can go up and get it.
Not vote yes.
Julie, who we're missing?
I said yes, I said.
Yep.
Todd made a mistake in his vote, he meant to vote yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, two yes, six no, that motion failed. Alright, public comments, Ms. Darby?
Thank you, at least we tried, you know, thank you.
Okay, public comment, um, so for our public comment time, I just want to remind everybody, we have two minutes, and that no speaker may use public comment to discuss personnel matters or matters otherwise private or confidential. Speakers are to address issues, not individuals, and when you come up and talk, we take notes. We won't answer your question directly, but staff will follow up or one of us will follow up. Somebody's taking good notes. So first, we have Rachel Hyatt from Drayton Hall Elementary, and then Zach Vascedi, I think, but that's probably not exactly correct, so you can fix it for me. So Rachel Hyatt? Come on up, you can come right up here to, to-
You got your chance to talk, sweetie. Come here, honey. Come here, love. Okay, um, I'm here to, I think you guys might know me from two years ago, I had addressed a situation where my son sat in the principal's office at Drayton Hall for-
Two weeks.
Straight?
Yes.
Okay, did you get to go to lunch?
No.
Did you get to go to art?
No.
Did you get to go to gym?
No.
Did you get to learn anything?
No.
How did that make you feel?
Probably, I think unhappy or sad.
Unhappy or sad? I remember you were very unhappy and sad during that time. And it, I let you guys know about this two years ago, and supposedly it was addressed, but at this point, there's an IP that was legally violated. He is autistic, high functioning, obviously brilliant, but autistic, and he did not get OT, that he was legally bound to get during those two weeks. This is a legal matter. I am talking to an attorney. I failed to see the okayness in this, and I don't trust the person that would do this to a child. I mean, I don't, and I want to protect, my son's homeschooled now. I'm doing the, give me a minute, to, to protect others, not him. But I want the community to know about this, I want it taken care of, and if it happened to your child, you'd be beside yourself. I've lost an incredible amount of sleep, unfortunately not weight this time, but a lot of sleep over this. Previously, when it first happened, I, I lost 30 pounds. I don't know why, it's not happening this time, it's just not fair, but I'm still suffering tremendously. What do you want to say then?
I'm, I'm, I don't get affected by this now, but anyway.
But did it hurt you at that time?
Yes.
Thank you for coming out and being a patient tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I do appreciate you guys talking about this and taking it seriously.
Thank you, ma'am.
It was your child, you'd be, you'd stay at school.
Thank you.
Zach, alright, tell, and then Will McCorkle, after that.
So my name is Zach Vascedi, I'm a teacher at East Cooper Montessori Char School, but I am here as an individual. So earlier this year, researchers with the Clemson Office of Inclusion and Equity presented the results of their six-month study to the CCSD School Board. Their findings showed that almost half of our 85 elementary schools are overwhelmingly segregated. 18 schools are over 80% African-American, and 17 schools are over 80% Caucasian. As a board member, would you have any role in changing these policies? And if so, how would you go about that? And before I cede my time, I must thank the board for your continued commitment to East Cooper Montessori. The primary program started in 2015 is a shining example of this board's effort to encourage diversity at our schools. It requires 40% of those slots to go to students who require SNAP assistance, and the continued funding and creation of similar programs across the district is urgently needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next, Will McCorkle, and then following will be Emily Abadon.
Thank you all for having me this evening. This is my 12th year in education. I actually recently moved down from the Greenville area, and so it's a little surprising, this last couple of months, driving down 26 and seeing the big sign supporting certain candidates. And actually, this issue reached the Washington Post about the special interest money in the race here in Charleston County. And so it's got a lot of national attention, and I'm not here to defame anyone who received money, or not, not personally received money, but benefited from this money. And I'm not even trying to say that the people that are giving this money are necessarily doing so out of nefarious purposes. I, I believe that they probably believe in the causes that they're supporting. But my question is, how is this corrupting the governance on the board? How are these special interest funds either causing people to vote in certain ways, or maybe fearful to vote in certain ways because the next election, money can be used for the opponent? And it's a real problem, and even if it's not actually leading to corruption, it's giving the appearance of corruption here in Charleston County. So what I would encourage you all going forward is to make a statement, make a resolution refusing to, or rejecting these type of special interest money that's really corrupting the system here in Charleston County. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily?
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Emily Abadon. I'm a mother of four, a CCSD parent for 15 years and running. I'm a professional writer who also serves as an academic mentor for several CCSD children from low-income families. I've written about homeless children in our district for Charleston Magazine. I also embedded for a year at Title One Mary Ford Elementary, which led me to volunteer there as a writing teacher. I currently teach high school journalism every day in North Charleston, and I'm now a student enrolled in the Masters in Teaching, Learning, and Advocacy Program at College of Charleston. As I have been on numerous other occasions, I am here to bear witness. My classmates who are also here plan to continue to come. Nobody has taught me more, except for one fifth grader at Mary Ford Elementary, than my classmates who are teachers. I beg of you to listen to them. Listen to them. They are in the trenches every day. One of my classmates gets up at 5:45 and drives to Jedburg from West Ashley. The meetings that you have, while honorable, do not suit time periods that working people can attend. Imagine how many more people would be here, there's 50,000 children in our district. It's your job to hear what's going on. And as everybody just witnessed, and we've seen at meeting after meeting, I'm not allowed to name names, you all have deplorable behavior. We wouldn't let our toddlers act that way. You have to start your meetings on time every time, and come out here and act like the adult. Our children are counting on it. Please, that's all I have to say for this meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily. And then Tamika Brown?
Good evening, I'm Tamika Brown. I am the primary caregiver of two students at East Cooper Montessori Charter School. My seven-year-old grandson Gabriel is in first grade. He attended primary 4K and 5K at the school, and my four-year-old grandson is in his first year at East Cooper Montessori. My oldest grandson had some speech issues before he started school, and we had no idea what was going on with him. When he enrolled in the school, they did some testing, and we found out that he was autistic. They have offered him occupational therapy, speech therapy, they worked with him in his classroom, so he's not pulled out, he's not made to feel different, and he has thrived in the Montessori program. I've raised two children. My children are 28 and 23 years old. We've always been within the Charleston County School District. It's a different learning environment, it's a nurturing learning environment, and it is great for our children. I am the parent and grandparent of a black boy. They are represented in that school right now, but it's not that Ms. Jody isn't trying. She reached out to several of the churches in our area. I am a police officer for the town of Mount Pleasant, and I personally went to the different schools, to the different churches, and spoke on behalf of the schools. That's one of the ways that she recruited in getting more people into the school who represent the entire community and not just one aspect of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for your comments.
Okay, at this time now, we will move to action items of other businesses. Item 9A, CCSD 2018-2020 goals.
We skip salary for adults.
Yes, I didn't get moved.
Okay, we took that off, okay. Item 8A, let's go back to item 8A.
I move to approve the salary for the hourly employees who were excluded in the spring in Edinburgh.
Second.
Okay, it's been probably moving second, are there any questions?
What is the, as I said in the opening, the lapse, right?
Fifty-six thousand.
Right, it's about 50,000, and it'll go up a couple of thousand because it's a percentage on top of a higher salary. So it's an ever-increasing, but not by a whole lot.
Right.
But the use of lapse salaries has to be concerning to anyone who's been through this district. So what was the reasoning for using lapse salaries? How did we know they existed for this particular school year? And do we have a recurring source of funds for the future?
A recurring source will have to come from additional revenue next year. That it should not be budgeted, and this is for when we start, Mr. Kennedy, the budgeting process next month, that-
It'll be included in the budget.
The plan for this needs to be to come from tax revenues, not from lapse salaries. Just if, if we'll make a note on that, so that we'll, yes, sir.
And the, the question is, I didn't think we had any budgeted lapse salaries, so are these empty positions we've been unable to fill for the 18-19 school year that we don't anticipate filling?
Yes, I mean, go ahead, Mr. Kennedy, excuse me.
So if I may, just put the number in context, and then I'll tell you about the funding piece. So the actual number is $47,600. So for the, for the fiscal year 19 budget, for the non-teacher pay increase, it was $3.9 million for non-teachers, so $3,878,000. So we add the $47,000 to it, we still have three-
It'll fit into the budget.
We're still at 3.9, according to the budget, and so when we put this presentation together for the Art and Finance Committee, we assume lapse salaries. Subsequent to that, we got, from the county, state, the county ordinance, reassessment, so our actual revenues for fiscal year 19 will be higher than what we're budgeted, so that's how we will cover that. And then, as Mr. Garrett said, when we do the budget for next year, if we, if the board decides on that, on increase, it'll be included in that, that budget item.
So it's funded this year by revenues?
That is correct.
And it will continue to be funded as part of the budget?
That's correct.
Thank you. I call the question.
Okay, Julie? Okay, you may vote.
She got, she got out of it first, I can just, I'm going to tell her what your vote is.
I voted in favor.
She voted in favor. She voted in favor.
Yeah, she's logged out.
Got logged out, so just
Can you put her in? Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay, motion seven, seven two, okay. Item nine A. This is CCSD twenty eighteen, twenty twenty goals. Is there a motion that this was included in your packet?
There's no changes to these from when we discussed them at the committee of the whole.
Simply refinements to make clear some of the statements based on feedback board members gave us.
We might want to review those to briefly.
Well, I moved to approve the two thousand eighteen, twenty twenty goals.
Were these published in any way for the public?
To the public yet, I don't think so.
Not until we approve them, correct? Correct. Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay.
I would also add that we do publish them on the website tomorrow morning, effective tomorrow morning. The better, the sooner and more public we make these goals, the better.
Okay, you may cast your vote.
Okay.
Has everyone cast their vote?
It's everybody that's here.
Yes, everyone is here. Okay, motion passed five, four, okay. At this time now, we have a superintendent report.
Well, to be clear, the motion passed five and four not present, there were not four nay votes.
Right.
Right.
I'll be brief. I would appreciate you putting the goal slide back up, please, Andy. Thanks. I want to make sure that we know what the major goals are, and so we lumped a few of them together here to make sure we're all clear about the agenda. Of course, significantly improve the percentage of students who are achieving on the pathway to readiness, and make sure that all of our students grow at least a year, more of our students grow at least a year a year. Those are the proficiency and growth goals Mr. Miller mentioned. Bold new approaches for our lowest-performing schools, improving governance effectiveness, determining the optimal school size for delivery of a high-quality curriculum and the instructional strategies, and then planning our new building program around the optimal school size, using our facility development around optimal school size so that we can provide equitable access to quality programs is really a big change for this district, and I don't want us to move forward without, without understanding that's in the goals. Intently focus on the materials, trainings, training and supports that will be needed for improving reading and mathematics instruction, and that will require summer sessions that are, are for teachers, professional development, and that we compensate teachers for that time in the summer, either through stipends and/or through college credit. Revamping the magnet and choice schools for quality and equity purposes, developing a new budget model, particularly so that we can focus on giving underserved students greater resources. In some of our conversations tonight, it sounded to me as though we forgot that that was one of our goals. That is clearly a goal as we move forward. Pilot in at least a few schools, a program that would develop new leaders differently and structure their responsibilities differently, i.e., some principals who are strong instructional leaders, and then a companion building manager so that the principal can be free to focus on instruction. And then finally, expand our career programs, the arts, the health curriculum, and the safety measures. So, tomorrow morning, the cabinet will meet, and we will start refining the plans for the committee of the whole meetings for the coming year around this agenda, around the goals, accomplishments. So, unless there's some reason for something to be on the agenda and be discussed that's not related to these goals, we would not normally spend a lot of time on agenda items that are not directly related to these goals. That is our understanding of what the board has asked us to do, and I just want to check for understanding.
Yes.
Yes. It's frustrating that we spent as much time as we did today on other issues that are unrelated at all to student achievement, and now we have five of us here out of a nine-member board, so.
I would say that we have to be very cognizant that the board has a huge responsibility to the financial understanding and management of how the money is spent. And I, these are, these are extreme, I absolutely agree, but we can't forget that lapse salaries and moving money around and those sorts of things are, A, directly within our purview because that's what we exist, and it's what got us in trouble the last time.
And we would not want you to
So, I agree with these, but I don't want to do this to say that talking about budget and moving money is not something we should be doing.
And to your point, the whole purpose of the budget is to support those things.
Right.
So, I see it part and parcel of that same conversation. And then, the other thing I just wanted to do was welcome this board, certainly the newly-elected board member, and to mention that we do need to start new board member orientation soon. But, Mr. Miller, because I know that you are, are planning to leave us, I wondered if
I changed my mind.
Yay!
This meeting has made my mind up. I renounce my throne.
We do need to set some dates for new board member orientation, and Mrs. Green has graciously offered to wait until Mr. Miller's replacement is here so we can get that started. But we need to be thinking about, as board members, we'd all appreciate your thinking about what was helpful to you, or what would have been helpful to you if you were going through board member orientation. Again, your suggestions would be greatly appreciated.
In coordination with the state-mandated ones that are already offered, I would say that that would help.
And that's it?
Thank you.
Okay. I personally would like to take this opportunity to say to the board, thank you for entrusting me to chair, at least for this next year, moving forward, as we jointly join together collectively as a board, moving CCSD to the next level, and supporting the goals and initiative that has been designed, and we have all recognized as important as far as achieving the next level. Dr. Post, the way that I look forward to working along with you and staff continuously to make those accomplishments happen, along with the guidance from, and jointly with the board. So, board members, I said to you, thank you. To Ms. Green, thank you for taking on the helm and being a part, and welcome to CCSD as we move forward. We thank you, I believe that now.
Mr. Chair, before we adjourn, a couple of clarifications. One of the things that we really need to avoid, or at the very least, and I'm not sure how to do this, but having things simply said on this stage by a board member do not constitute them as being fact, and we tend to do a lot of misinformation from this stage, and I don't know how we would clean that up. To wit, Reverend Collins is actually the person who made the motion to close Greg Mathis Charter High School, and he made that motion on August ninth, two thousand and ten. There are three small businesses. November is when the chair appoints the Audit and Finance Committee Chair, and November is when the chair does the request per board policy on the technical and communication equipment, so we need to get on that.
So, we will do that at the December seventeenth board meeting. Also, as we about to adjourn, I'd like to remind board members to please, please read the information in your packet. I believe we spent a lot of time asking questions of information that has already been presented to us or already included in the packet. So, I just highly encourage that we do come prepared by reading our packet and being ready to do the business of the district. Having said that, we intend a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
This meeting is now adjourned.